Just hear you praying this morning, I'm gonna get you a paper.
All right, it's Tuesday, October twenty first, twenty twenty three. It is nine AM, we're going over with Commissioner White, say a prayer.
Our heavenly Father, we call your precious name this morning, thanking you once again for life, health, and strength. We want to thank you, oh Lord, for a day that we've never seen before. We thank you, oh Lord, for blessing our families, and we thank you, oh Lord, for watching over Newton County's citizens. We pray, Father God, as we go through this court session this morning, that we will make the right decision that will be pleasing in your sight, also that will benefit the citizens of Newton County. It's in Jesus's name we ask, amen.
Amen.
All right. We don't call them any in order? Uh, as far as public hearing except, do you have anybody set up to speak? Um, all right, we do have a quorum. Um, like we acknowledge all the guests, and we'll close the public hearing. Um, we're delivering, consider action on the following items. Item number one, extend burn ban to November fourteenth, twenty twenty five. Uh, we put the burn ban on, uh, right now, we're we're very close to the extreme danger level on dryness. So what are we at now, Mark?
Yeah.
It was just, I mean, just one level off of extreme fire danger. Okay, so we would like to extend ours to the
We're gonna go to the twentieth judge out of the
So, so let me ask you about that, Judge. I'm, I'm certainly in favor of the burn ban, but could we just extend it to our next meeting? In case we get a monster, I mean, there's something, we could just put it on the next agenda, you know, just to go from meeting to meeting that would show that we're trying
Well, if we put it on until November the twentieth, then we get the rain, you know, we could, we could take the burn ban off.
You take it off without a court meeting? It's good enough.
Yeah, we could take, we can remove the burn ban, that way, uh, if we get enough rain, we could do it.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't realize you could retract it from your office with it being voted on.
Yeah, I, I can lift it, um. So I'm making motion that we extend the burn ban until November twentieth, twenty twenty five.
Six.
All right, motion made by me, second by, uh, Danny Benson, uh, Commissioner Benson, all in favor?
Ah.
All against? All right, item number two, approve contract extension between Newton County and Deep East Texas Council of Government, Deco, for the nutrition program. All right, this is the funding that, uh, Deco pays toward the, uh, the meals on wheels and the congregation meal program. Uh, this is the contract to extend it for another year.
Same contract we had, Judge?
Yeah, same, same contract we've had.
I make motion that we approve the contract extension between Newton County and Deep East Texas Council of Governments, Deco, nutrition program.
All right, second. Motion made by Commissioner Powell, second by Commissioner Hopson, all in favor?
Ah.
All against? All right, item number three, approve twenty twenty six county holiday schedule. Haven't seen the twenty twenty six holiday, it, it must be in here. How many days we getting, you know?
Fifteen.
Yeah.
The game though? Yeah, sixteen, uh, eighteen?
All right.
Oh, yeah.
Holiday date, uh, New Year's Day, Portland King's Day, Junior Day, January nineteenth. President's Day is Monday, February the sixteenth. Texas's Independence Day, uh, Monday, March second. County Fair Day, Friday, April tenth. Good Friday, Friday, April the third. April the third. Memorial Day, uh, Emancipation Day, Friday, June nineteenth. Independence Day, July third. Labor Day, uh, Monday, September seventh, Columbus Day, um, October the twelfth. Veterans Day, uh, November eleventh. Thanksgiving, which is a, uh, Thursday, Friday, November twenty fifth and twenty sixth. Christmas of a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, December twenty third to twenty sixth, and New Year's Eve, uh, December thirty first.
We're going to go on a, got one every month.
Back to school.
Yeah.
I think we need to cut out Columbus Day.
I think.
I mean, everybody else is working Columbus Day, except for Columbus.
Spagot, if it is taken, I'd say. Or to give him one question. Then what we could do, we could just take Columbus Day, October eleventh.
Don't like that Sunday? Hey, I'm all for that.
Let's figure it out. You say everybody else is working, and the banks open on Columbus Day?
No. Mail don't run.
I'll make a motion.
I, I thought, I thought everybody was working. No. Mail don't run?
No. But keep it in. I'll make a motion, we approve the twenty twenty six county holiday schedule.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Hopson. Second. Second by Commissioner White, all in favor?
Ah.
All against? All right.
They're not here. They try to hang me.
I know.
All right, item number four, uh, approve twenty twenty six commissioners court schedule. All right, and that's the starting, uh, January thirteenth.
That's Tuesday, is that at all on second Tuesday?
Yeah.
September August.
Yeah.
Um, November, whatever.
Give it to a month because of bill pay.
Yes.
Just it amazes me, cannot figure out how to do one commissioner's court month and pay the bills successfully. Surely, surely we have to be able to do that.
Please, deal for years.
Did we not go one month this year that we didn't, I mean, did we go a month that we didn't have but one bill pay?
If we understand that. But what happens though? Like tire wear just opened back up? I use them come try and pour it new account. Well, we miss one bill pay, and that's going to throw them two months behind. It might not bother you and I, because we're new business just starting off, it hurts them. Now, I, there should be a way we can figure pay quite a month out doing.
Especially with the P O system coming along, right?
Yeah.
Let me ask you this. So, what I understand to be the case is we're supposed to have a meeting on the P O system. Talk about how is it gonna work, you know, and then work through those details. Do we need to approve this today, or can we wait till the P O system meeting? And then possibly, I don't want to use the word challenge, but challenge our auditor and our treasurer to say, can you figure out a way to, because I don't want to hurt any businesses either, but I, I don't know. Thinking down the box here, is there a way they can? I mean, there's
I like once a month, I'll say.
We, we, all share all the money. I lose half a day every time I come up here.
Yeah, we can table this until, um, later date. So everybody gets their questions answered. I, I, sometimes I don't know the monthly bill pay with, you know, because we have our utility bills. You know, when they come in, you know, they, they're gonna be running a month and a half late, or it's like the bills. Unless, if they're on different dates. But south end might be one date, nor thing.
It don't matter.
And I think that's why they went to it, because utility bills. Like a church is due the end of the month, but my residence do the fifteenth of the month. Yes, for new, they, they're not on the same. I'm not four miles from the church. But we could table this until everybody gets their, their, yeah, thoughts together on it. So, uh, I'm making motion, we, uh, table the twenty twenty six, uh, commissioners court schedule.
Second.
All right, motion made by me, second by Commissioner Hopson, all in favor?
Ah.
All against? All right, item number five, approve appointment of Olin Bean as district president of the Southeast Texas Groundwater Conservation District for a three-year term beginning on January the first, twenty twenty six, and ending Jan-, uh, December thirty first, twenty twenty eight. Olin's already the, uh, uh, Newton County, but we're just re-upping his time. I make that motion, Judge. All right.
Second.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Powell, second by Commissioner White, all in favor?
Ah.
All against? All right, item number six, uh, approve appointment of Courtney Lott as Newton County Representative on the Board of Directors of the Southeast Texas Groundwater Conservation District for the remainder of the term left vacant with the resignation of Thomas Hithon, uh, ending December thirty first, twenty twenty six, and also filled the next term of January first, twenty twenty seven to December thirty first, twenty twenty nine. All right, we've got, uh, with Olin Bean moving up, we have two, uh, openings for Newton County on the groundwater conservation. So, uh, we had one lady, she went back teaching, so she had to resign. So we have two appointments, and I thought, uh, Courtney and Kena were the two appointments. So that's coming up on the next, next agenda, Adam. You know, because they're doing the floodplain stuff, so I thought they would be good representatives for the county on groundwater conservation district. I'll make that motion. All right, motion made by Commissioner Hopson, second, second by Commissioner Benson, all in favor?
Ah.
All against? All right, item number seven, appoint representative as the Newton County Representative to the Board of Directors of the Southeast Texas Groundwater Conserv-, uh, Conservation District for a three-year term beginning on January the first, twenty twenty six, and ending December thirty first, twenty twenty eight. And that's where I, I thought Courtney and Kena, so I'm thinking of Kena McDaniel on the board.
Awesome.
You asked her.
Yes, yes. Well, this is, uh, hey, guess what you got? We did ask.
Talk about that, we found out that meeting Friday, we're gonna come up with a, this map about all this flood.
Yes.
Twenty twenty six.
Yes, it, it should be online, twenty twenty six.
Yep.
So, so this, uh, I think it's important to point out that these positions that we're talking about are non-paid positions.
Yes.
So, just for the viewers out there watching, amen. I make motion that, you know, as the groundwater district's representative, New York County.
Right. Motion made by Commissioner Powell. Second, second by Commissioner Benson, all in favor?
Ah.
All against? All right, item number eight, approve temporary access agreement between Newton County and Manulife Investment Management Force Management for the use of private roads seventy seventy three and precinct four.
So Judge, what this is about, or for, this is a, um, right now, to get to, yes, we have to drive about fourteen and a half miles of highway miles. I ten, when it shuts down, Highway twelve, this is the new I ten. So a lot of times we're in horns way on that highway. This is what they used to refer to as the rock road, and it used to be a public road, and it was all the way through. And somehow it became less than that, but we're, we're talking about three and a half miles of dirt road to get us to Gist versus fourteen miles highway, so fair and tear on the vehicle, safety, it's just a win-win for everyone. Um, what we will have to do is, um, we'll have to do some, we'll have to drop the blade, maintain the road when we're going down it, we're in tearing it, but so this is a memorandum of understanding that this is fostered, grew up a forest and got the map in there. It was, it absolutely comes out on County Road thirty one, thirty two, which used to go all the way through. I've got it taken out, but it did. It's just a request, you say, we're in contract, it's in the package today.
Yes.
Misty has been working on, uh, working on this for precinct with the landowners. I got super excited, because, oh, yeah, I ten just now, and it's just literally bumper to bumper, it was like, this weekend just can't get across this bad situation. And well, it was pretty unique.
Well, it saved on your tires anyway.
Oh, eight thousand dollars a set, you're leaving rubber every, every mile you go, you're leaving rubber on the ground, so this is a win for everybody. And, and quite honestly, what it just does also is it creates another road in case of an emergency.
They have wrecked something, yeah. Which had had a lot on six.
And, and quite honestly, you know, a hurricane blows in or something, we've got the ability to get there. It's just a big win.
I make motion that we approve it, the, uh, temporary access agreement between Newton County and Manulife Investment Management Force, uh, Management uh, for the use of the road, private road, uh, seven oh, seven three, and precinct four. All right. That's second. All right, motion made by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Benson, all in favor?
Ah.
All against? Thank you all. You're welcome. Item number nine, receive status update regarding communication talent. All right.
Good, Commissioner, uh, far so long, thank you for extending the burn ban for the citizens of the whole county. What I recall. At Sarah Hillay Barnes, since bond bands have put on, the sheriff's department has responded adequately uh, to help enforce the bond aid, also to, uh, inform the hook, uh, first thing the hook says, I didn't I'm very huge, we're proud of that road, uh, we would also like to be able to use it in more situations, getting to the Gist area over there with our equipment, uh, this would help in time for us to get to the uh, right now, they're still doing a little bit of tuning. Uh, Jody and Tracy is staying in touch with the sheriff's department, seeing if they have any communication issues and all. They have better quality, quality communications now. There's still some dead spots, uh, don't, if you're not using your mode, you have as many wants that you're out there, but, uh, I went on four calls this weekend with, uh, two of our deputies, and I used my hand to help. Those calls. We're still, I'm still waiting to get with, uh, Mr. Lanning Kelly. Uh, he was out a little bit late last night this morning. We have a ladder that needs to be fixed, one tower, so we can get that satellite dish, that should be the last piece that they have to put in cases. Get by Caden, who's ending the day. Still still talking about the communication for the fire department. Fire department that doesn't have communication of this, sheriff's department lets them have a couple of radios that they talked on their frequency. Did hear someone from Parkville respond, they got torn back last week on medical problems, so somebody apparently escaped. And had a chance to get himself by a chopper. Talk with Joey and Tracy in the questions that you had last meeting about the commissioners frequency, that forty-four thousand dollars was on repeaters with mayflyer and Luke and S R eight town. But it had nothing in there about radio. If you have radios, they said that they would look at the radio and see what it would take of radio with this engagement system, so that's what we're saying.
So that's forty-four thousand, just the commissioner?
Yes, the commissioner.
Yes.
That's, uh, put, put the repeater mayflyer, I would worry about, so.
Eleven thousand each precinct.
That's where we're at now, unless y'all have some more listening, y'all, yes. I talk to them about once a week.
So, we also got a forty-eight thousand hard bid to fix the tower in Bleakwood.
In Bleakwood, and they said that in the future, I don't know what the future they're talking, probably next year. But they recommend that the tower itself and that will be a big one of the issues that we have, Commissioner Benson, there is the lack of only when you put a tower up, they ask five acres for the cable safety. But that's why cables are so tight down there on that tower. You don't have the length, if you don't have length, you got to, got to straighten out what was strong to tell. They go back with it, they'll fix the footings, and then they'll reap the cables, stay in the cable.
That tire's been up there for twenty years or so.
Yeah, it's, it's been up for a long time.
And whenever they move, you
Put some paint on it.
Well, and that, that's another thing that I thought about, they said there was some pity, some little pin holes, but that could be fixed. Thank you, sir.
I think we could probably paint it and get by another ten years.
Yeah.
You know, that, so there, there are people out there that are metal, I suppose, I mean, we've worked with them. They can, you know, you go out there and look at bolts on the flange, and think, oh, my God, it's about to blow off, and they go to scratching on it and tear rust off it, no, no, it's in great shape. So I don't know that we want just the radio, not just the salesman getting us an evaluation on the tower integrity, we need to bring in a another expert.
Well, these are, these are people that actually do the tower, and Jody and Tracy don't, they go out and get a tower special. As a matter of fact, other company like this is the one that condemned the one there, so.
Oh, we might look at getting that one painted. You know, and get a few more years out of it.
Yeah, and I can go through that duration now.
Okay. See what it take, uh?
Go out, get the X, so see what it taking, what their expectation is, how much longer life that it has.
We can extend it five or ten years with paint job.
Should be able to.
I, I'd say go there, we're out for now.
Okay. I can do that. In more course, they're going to change foot, though, right? Yes, I, yes.
We just have to approve the bid on it, forty-eight thousand.
I guess one question take back to the end is if commissioners were to vote to spend forty-four thousand? And I'm assuming that would come out of our budgets. But anyways, if we, if we voted to do that, if everybody was in favor of that, I mean, I'll tell you where I'm at with it, I'll spend, I'll, I'll spend the forty-four thousand, just because of the safety concerns I got with dead spots in my precinct, I mean, I'd hope everybody would ante up if they wouldn't. We need it, I mean, we got, we got I, I got a guy on line road today that can't use the phone.
Right.
If he has any kind of situation, he's, he's in trouble. But, uh, can you find out how long it would take if we said, checks in the mail? How long before they could put the repeaters up and get us to?
Yeah, I can, I can get on.
Oh. You're looking at eleven thousand per commission?
Yeah.
I think the load, sure. I did it quicker, getting rid of you.
There you go.
And, but it does mean so much, uh, I mean, y'all busy as a, on a day-to-day basis with what your, your normal job requires you to do for the, for the citizens in, in the county. But if we have, say we don't have a factory vest, but it's something that somebody calls us. There are still situations where you commissioners need to communicate, not only with your approval, the sheriff's you may need something that from a deck, or something like this. And if you have no way to get a hold of me myself, or those one radios that somebody plugs up the repeater system, radio system is going. And you take hurricanes, and you're tied up down south, trees down eighty-seven, and nobody can get to you, you can't send help up north or down south, you in the middle, and then y'all can't send it anywhere else. Disaster.
Well, I, I think I've said this story before, but I remember one year, on the precinct one hand, uh, someone had robbed the post office in Bonmore, they had a description of the car, and the sheriff's department was scrambling, lick a boy. So, on the precinct one hand, got on the radio and said, hey, that, told him where the car was, and he was following it. So, so the sheriff's department got there. You know, somebody, and he was going down
Somebody, and he was going down eighty-seven, heading toward Dewville. And they spotted him. Well, he followed him to the sheriff's department. Officer came from Dewville and pulled him over. Good to have.
Yeah.
You ever hear me holler on the radio with better answer?
I think bad about it is you'll want that freight truck back soon if we get the radios. On, on the same situation about communication. Now, I'm passionate about this. And I have been since Wayne Powell was in office, asking for better communication. Our fire department has or none of best communications in the whole county, much less the whole state. We go over the orange county, often to them, which we respond a lot. Mr. Powell knows that we respond a lot to Morrisville and Little Simon. We have their frequencies and I love them. The sheriff's department still cannot talk when you can't. Cause they will not. They say they will, but we have not seen an M O E from them so that we get that capability. Sheriff speaking. But it's, it's coming into sometimes that you don't know what's going to happen. The fellows put paper that's out there and know the paper that can do. But it's, it's very. And the judge said I can retire once I get all this communication.
That's right. Ask your friends.
I'm that much closer if I can convince commissioners to agree on. But talking about communications, we had our safety meeting at the school yesterday. It went, went very well. I've got a documented copy of hazard mitigation for the school. Something happens, Andy, if the deputy needs help there, we've got the mobile unit in the car, we've got the handheld, so the deputy and the handheld for the school. So school buses. And then they can talk to the sheriff's department.
You know, one, one example, and it's more for the folks watching than the court, because the court understands it. Couple of weeks back, I got a call from a resident. And I'm not sure who I need to call. I called this, called that, couldn't get anybody. What's wrong? She said, there's an eighteen-wheeler stuck on railroad tracks. I just panicked. I was like, oh, my God. And I, I flew down forty-two oh three and come over the railroad tracks at the other crossing. And as I turned, railroad workers were out there. And I just slammed on the brakes, hollered, hey, there's an eighteen-wheeler stuck. Well, he just, he just jumped on his phone and went to make a call. And I took off and before I got down there, he'd done run up on me again. When we got down there about the same time, Jeep come out. But he stopped, see a train about three hundred feet from the truck. And with the radio, you could, you know, I could have called and got other people involved. But there was seven more trains stopped on that track before we got that truck off that track. So, and then also just to add a little bit, the Gistin Oak Champion area, they don't have an E S D, they don't have fire department. So Morrisville and Dewville responds to that. So they gotta be able to talk to each other because they're both responding. And, you know, tragedies like the lawnmower event. And then lastly, Cockwood has an agreement with the Little Cypress Fire Department to respond to their facility. Dewville also responds as a support mechanism. So they have to be able, there's a lot of overlap between Little Cypress, Morrisville and Dewville.
Yeah.
We're fortunate, we're blessed to have these communications he's talking about.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
I thank you, brother, for all you've been doing.
Yes, sir.
Keep me going.
I come up with something else so you can't retire. All right. Item number ten is budget amendments. We don't have anybody from the auditor's office. And so I don't guess we're going to do item number eleven, payment appeals. So. Are we going to have an executive session? Can we, I just had one thing on page with a minute. Okay. Well, I think it's litigation. I mean, it's, it's about an appeal.